The Board of Directors to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas, June 21st, 2022, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on June 15th, 2022, at 1:00 PM. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041, 551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum present in the boardroom. We have Mr. Baader, Dr. Lallan, myself, Mr. Friedman on Zoom. We have joining us, Bill Donahue. If I may please, one to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Invitation.
Stand.
To the United States, where it stands, willing nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all its blessings. Keep us ever mindful of our responsibility to serve our community. Bless us with wisdom and guide us in our decisions so that we may be better stewards. Give us clarity so that we can effectively tackle each part of today's agenda, reveal problem areas, and lead us to the best solutions. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Let's move along to item four, Consider and Discuss for Possible, I'm sorry, item three, Consider, excuse me, I'll turn around to that. Item three, Invitation to the Audience for Public Comments. Does include anyone, staff, board, Zoom, anyone like to share, add anything? Let's carry on to item four, Consider and Discuss for Possible Approval of the Regular Minutes of the Regular Meeting from June 8, 2022. Mr. Baader approves, seconded by Dr. Lallan, or all those in favor, they are, none are opposed. Thank you. Let's carry to item five.
Mr. Sherman, then, members of board, as you requested, the previous two meetings back, that we be more transparent and, as you can see, the updates on the lift station, the water distribution system, South Padre Island, valve upgrades, and then Andy Bowie Storage Tank, the water treatment improvements, it's all have been posted on our websites. And our media affairs has posted to allow the media. And I believe that they also worked on, posted it on the newspaper, the Post in the book press. So, we're trying to do this every meeting and giving updates.
I appreciate Carlos.
Actually, every week, we're doing that and bringing to the board that information. So, you all can be aware that we are advising all our customers what the projects are and what the updates are.
I appreciate, I think it's most important that it gets on the streets, that people are aware, or at least somewhat aware, those that want to be aware know what's going on.
Right. Thank you. We keep doing that.
That include? Okay. Item six, Charles, District Engineers Report.
First item we got is just a follow-up on the project status. We have our sewer services completed on Highway 100. So, it's just basically the area from Stripes to the Poncho. We were able to get all the services connected. And, you know, there are some schematics here of the drawings for the areas that were improved with this gravity line. And, for example, the church horse main, the church's chicken horse main used to be tapped to that horse main, we're working against the pressure at Laguna Heights. Now it's on a gravity line, so that back pressure is no longer an issue. Stripes, they were able to get their service line connected directly, same with Tortueville and Burger King. And at HEB, when we tried to connect their line, their invert was right at the elevation of our gravity sewer. Plus, we have a lot of utility conflicts that came into play. So, at HEB, they had to keep their lift station, but we kept their force main off the other pressure main and tied it to the gravity line. So, it's gonna basically stay like that until they can do some further line improvements or do further in their private property. But it's gonna meet the needs at their responsibility. So, there's no further work needed at HEB, it's still working good. And plus, as Laguna Heights upgrades, it's not gonna have any adverse effects to their site.
So, do they have to do it, or do we have to force it, or it's just kind of open?
It's open.
They can eliminate the lift station, right?
Well, to eliminate the lift station, they're gonna have to work the yard line pretty far back to figure out how to pick it up or resolve the utility conflict. It's either moving some large diameter lines or figuring out the gravity line in their private property and adjusting. So, it's gonna stay the way it is for the foreseeable future. But at the same time, we've decoupled it from Laguna Heights. So, as Laguna Heights expands, they're not gonna have any adverse effects to it. So, we should be good there. And same thing with Walgreens and Poncho, because of where their lift stations are sitting, they're gonna be like HEB where it's force main now tapped to the gravity line. But it's already finished in, you know, in the final condition there. So, the last thing we did was at Shell Harbor Subdivision. We connected the force main from that lift station behind the Second Street. And so now that's on the new main that they brought in the street. So, that pretty much finalized all the sewer work here for this corridor. And so, it's just now, it's just pavement cleanup. And then continuing down Woody's Lane to upgrade the piping from Woody's Lane at that corner down to the plant. And so, that's where we're at with the sewer project. And they've already started out in Port Isabel on Daddy Tuya, Jefferson, that area is starting the next section of the work. So, that's where we're at with the sewer construction. And then the next one was the construction cost estimates. Now that we're, we got enough estimates for 60% design on the water plant, elevated storage tank and raw water transfer pump station. And just moving on to the next item here, we're looking at a remaining balance of about 5.2 million needed on top of our remaining funds in the tax fund to get our current work that's under design to completion. And that includes, you know, the contingencies that are built in these estimates. And so, we did go back and forth. We had a, an estimate from the preliminary designer report in, that we received in March for the water plant improvements. And from that point in March to where we're at in May, we were able to cut 10 million out of that work. And so, we got it down to the bare bones to where we need to get this essential portion of 5 million gallons per day and have a building with space for the future improvements as it's funded. So, you know, for that job, we need an additional 2 million over the budget. The elevated storage tank estimate is at 1.5 million over the estimate when it was funded. And the raw water transfer pump station is an additional 2 million. And so, we have, our non-construction costs were paid from the premium when we closed on the bond, so that's available balance. But at the end of the day, when you look at our balance sheet, we're needing 5.2 million from the revenue source based on our current estimates. So, that's where we stand right now on our tax bond projects. So, I don't know if there's anything to add.
But I'd just like to add that we'll come back to the board and continue advising our budget committee and then the full board on what is available for us to move forward with and complete those projects. But as of right now, we're gonna move forward with what we have. At a later date, we'll come back to the board. We're, we had a conference call this morning with our bond counsel and our financial advisor. And we're looking into avenues of doing something to complete that project for 5 million, but we'll bring it to the board later. So, you all can be aware.
Been a productive budget committee meeting this week. Looking forward to, it's kind of in there for to crunch some numbers and come back with recommendation on what we need to do.
And thank you guys for coming over, because it's after hours, 2:30.
Man, it's gonna be, it's real, I mean, you're gonna be short money. I knew that going, we knew that.
What, 5?
Yeah, 5 million, 5.2 million.
But we're gonna look into it because according to our financial advisor, that we're not sure, we may need, we may need a little more.
Yeah, we want to wait till, you know, further along in the project, once we have, you know, maybe opening bids so that we have more concrete figures before we consider exactly.
What are you thinking, revenue bonds or something?
Yes, that's probably the first option, yes.
Well, if we're gonna do revenue bond, when, you know, two years from now, why not raise the revenue now, so they have two years of more revenue?
But that's one of the options that we're looking.
And then do a revenue bond on that revenue, if that time comes.
So, we're looking into that option.
Yes.
Just to go ahead and pay the revenue bonds and keep moving forward. But we'll bring it up to the board again, like I mentioned, as soon as we can figure the best option and the best way to.
If we're at a public board meeting, I think it's probably wise to say, put out there for anybody.
It's a workshop, a workshop, yes.
Yeah, that, that it's a real possibility rates will have to go up. They're scheduled for a small increase that finishes this year.
Yes, that's right.
But given the state of inflation that, you know, nobody really planned on three, four years ago, reality is, we may, may need to raise revenues in order to pay for everything that we have to pay for, including some of the employee costs that had not been accounted for basically for a previous decade. And then we kind of caught you guys backed up to make it competitive with other water districts. But that also, I don't think was totally accounted for last time we raised rates. So, I'm not putting that out there, we open it up for the public. Yes, it's a possibility we gotta raise rates that could be anywhere from 5% to 15%.
That's one of the options that we want to present to the committee or a budget workshop, when we get all the budget together. And you can see what we're asking for along with, with that.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you guys for working on it. They have, they're doing their homework. They've had multiple conversations with our financial advisors, and they're doing hard work, so they're not so sure. Just gotta see where it ends up here.
Thank you.
Yeah, that concludes it here.
Okay. Let's move on to item seven, Presentation by, excuse me if I mispronounce, Canescu? Casque, Ikihata, Texas State University for Water Research Foundation Endowment for Innovation and Applied Water Quality Research. I welcome you today.
Okay. Well, I'll start this presentation.
I just like the record to show that even though Mr. Sirk is not president, just last week, I was talking with him. Why don't we just hook a pump up to the storm water, fill our reservoirs with it? So, this must have been, it's on my mind.
Well, thank you very much for having me, Mr. Chairman and the members of board directors, and thank you very much to the staff. My name is Casque Ikihata, I'm Assistant Professor at Texas State University. I joined Texas State University about three years ago. Actually, so almost exactly three years ago, I was in California, moved to Texas, and I accepted this job. And I'm teaching civil engineering and water and wastewater treatment. So, today, I'd like to share our, one of our research initiatives using examples. You know, Dr. Lallan said, adding a stormwater to the water supply, which is actually overlooked for quite a while. So, it's, so to introduce, this is, you know, everyone knows that drought is happening again, lucky, unfortunately, unfortunately. It's serious, drought condition continues. And this is a map of the drought monitor. You can go to the website, drought monitor in Texas, and this is where we are right now. The red and darker color, more serious the drought. And according to the Texas drought monitor, almost 80% of the whole Texas, state of Texas is D1 to D4 drought, which really means under certain order stress. And luckily, Cameron County here is white, which means there is no drought condition in this specific area. However, as all you know, that order for this community is really coming from Rio Grande and upstream of Rio Grande is pretty red. So, which means they are so thirsty and they taking water from you guys or allocations and all. So, it is overall statewide, nationwide problem. According to the Texas Tribune, May 25, some of the Rio Grande floods dropped. I haven't seen that yet, but it's like it is, it was, so it is serious for showcase. But as all you know, there are many solutions for this drought. Solution number one is reclaim water, which can be discussed at the Laguna Madre Water District already. It's a drought resistant, low water source. So, we use water, treat the water, and return the water back to the system. That's very much doable. There are two ways to do so. We can use it for non-horrible uses, like irrigation, landscaping, or we can actually drink it. Technology is already there. I have pictures of myself standing in front of a lot of our system. These are all state of Texas, and I was there in California. California is doing water reuse as well. So, there are roughly four major water reuse projects in Texas. One, Colorado River Municipal Water District, Big Spring, Texas, I was drinking their water, treated, highly treated wastewater. Tastes like water, just like this. And City of Westphal, back in 2014 to 2015, under the various years drought, they did the emergency DPR, direct portal reuse, which means they drink the water after the use, treated the wastewater, and treated again. And they made it to drink the water out of that. So, they've done it. And after the drought back in 2015, they actually stopped the practice and they are doing indirect portal reuse, which means that you're not drinking the water directly, like not out of the white wastewater. They actually instead sending the water to the local reservoirs. Then, they take the water, treat the water again and drink it. That's for IPR, that those are the acronyms I have. City of Bubbling has the same thing, system, they have a reversal smokes system and going back to drinking water. El Paso is also doing IPR. In their case, they're injecting the treated wastewater to the ground. And then they're pumping up, they have been doing this several decades, like. And they're currently doing something for DPR project, they're 15 minutes, I don't know if it does, GPM project, it's under construction. Other solutions include seawater desalination. I know, like we mentioned, we already discussed this option. It has a very high salinity, 35 grams per liter, that's a lot of salts in it. So, you really have to do a lot of dissemination. We put a lot of energy to it and squeeze a little bit of water. So, that's kind of last result, in my opinion. Brackish water has been used a lot in the state of Texas. Brackish groundwater desalination, brackish surface water desalination is heavily used. And I know there are groundwater desalination plant in this area as well. The stormwater, the last third one I have had on the list, is actually not quite, not used in the state or elsewhere. There are some reasons behind that, but it has a lowest salinity. It's almost like a distilled water, I have a water quality table over there, overlooked and utilized water resources. So, our new solution at Texas State is kind of a calm versus edgy or something. So, I don't know why we kind of overlook this, the unutilized water resources. But if we could blend stormwater with the reclaim water, which is treated wastewater, we can actually achieve a lot of good stuff, such as lowering the salinity or the concentrations of constituents or pollutants in the wastewater by diluting with the stormwater. The stormwater is almost like a distilled water. If we add distilled water to the wastewater, we can add more volume and possibly make it better. And that would really utilize all the, you know, underutilized water resources. And this actually applies here really well, because stormwater here is going to the ocean, or the Gulf of Mexico. Direct, nobody's using it, no one's claiming it, never used. So, this is probably a good place to try this. So, at Texas State, we did some researches back in 2021. I got a small grant from the university, and we collected five stormwater samples, seven reclaim water samples, and one rainwater samples. And we figured.
For this area?
In Texas, central Texas. Yeah. So, what we found really is, I mean, reclaim water quality, we all know, it's a little bit salty, not as fresh as a freshwater or drinking water. It has some nitrate in it and some turbidity, some bugs in there. Stormwater is kind of cleaner than reclaim water. Really, the salinity is TDS 180, that's a kind of average of the stormwater. In my area, in central Texas, it's actually like four times less salty than the wastewater. And just for comparison, we collected rainwater directly. And it's almost, it really, this too, where you can see that towards the, towards the right. Rainwater is very low concentration of everything. So, that really, you know, proves a point. And why don't we use a rainwater? And mix it with the second water, that would be probably a good solution, maybe, maybe not. So, there are actually the questions or challenges. There are some uncertainties, of course, rain doesn't fall as planned. Today, we went to the beach and with my family, actually, I'm here for vacations, by the way. And, and in the afternoon, we got small rainfall, it's so unpredictable. So, that's the biggest question. Another one is the storage and convenience infrastructure, stormwater. Stormwater falls unexpected, where shall we store it? How can we bring the stormwater back to the water treatment plant? That's the biggest question. After Charles and I had some discussion ourselves about that. And it could be doable, but there are some challenges because of the amount of water we are talking about. It's huge, million gallons of water. How can we store the million gallons of water and move it around? Everybody knows it's heavy and very expensive, yeah. You know, nobody wants transport water from 100 miles away from here, from there to here. It's been already done, but we don't want to double that. And regulations and water rights is another thing. Who owns the water? That's, that's another issue. Whatever the water falls onto that, people can claim that, depending on jurisdiction. So, that's, there are maybe some complexities. Could be everybody's water, but we don't. So, that's something we need to figure out. And site specificity, site specificity is another thing. I, I thought that at the beginning, maybe the inland people will be more beneficial to this type of approach. Because they have less water. Drought is happening inland, not in the coastal area. But surprisingly, when I presented my research at Texas Water Conference in San Antonio, Charles attended my presentation and she opposed. And, you know, maybe this is a place that we could possibly practice this stormwater, reclaim water blend. I never thought about it, because also people, they have a lot of water resources and you can access to seawater if needed. But seems like coastal area may have a benefit, because stormwater, nobody claims it. Upstream rate, rainwater is actually becoming a river water, like Rio Grande. And somebody's looking, waiting for the water to come to your area. But here, nobody needs it, and why don't we just advantage that? So, that's a kind of, we never thought about this. So, I'm so happy that could be, could be a possibility to try this out here. So, I'm gonna manage water district, give any lectures on this. Who you are, again, raw water is taken, coming from Rio Grande. We were, and as, as far as I know, as far as I learned, the allocation is cut it down because of all these conditions upstream. It's a very sensitive, I don't want to talk about that. But it looks like water, we want to secure more water resources, preferably local, so that the city, community, this area can grow more sustainably. We don't want to count on somebody else's water. That's why I believe that you guys studied the wastewater reuse under Title 14 feasibility study back in 2014, 15. And we have a plan or the feasibility study result on that, this is really great. I love to see that happen. Also, no Title 14 alternative, which is to see what a desalination, that's also effective option. So, and John told me that actually just adjacent to the plant too, and where's our city, there is a big wetland, which is collecting the stormwater in the area. And, well, why don't, can we use that, when it's so close to the water treatment plant? Maybe that could be another source of water, since we water. And, and also learn that the Laguna Vista area is being developed and redeveloped. And that could be a possible source of cleaner stormwater or rainwater. So, that could be a very attractive option. And Port Oysabaire Water Wastewater Treatment Facility produces this effective wastewater. So, I collect, I was here back in May 17, and I'm back here today. And I collected water samples from those two facilities and do some analysis. And that's a kind of, there is a busy table, so, you know, I don't have time to go through this. So, the highlight really is that actually the wetland water is slightly saline or salty than I expected. This is because the wetland is close to the ocean, it's always seawater is affecting it. But it's not as salty than the seawater, which means that we could disseminate this wetland water a lot easier than the seawater. And the wastewater from the Port Isabel wastewater treatment facility is that, you know, reasonable water quality. I think the district is doing great job treating the wastewater, wastewater.
What's the salinity of the water we drink?
About 700.
So, this says it's 297 RF, really?
That's. Well, the other, were TDS total dissolved solids?
Yeah, TDS 1788. Yeah, that's where we're at.
But that, that's a total dissolved solids. The salinity itself, you can see.
Well, I guess I was just looking at.
Two to 300, like sodium?
This is salinity.
That's salinity, okay.
How does that compare to San Antonio or something?
That's from the wastewater treatment plant.
Right, right. So, the water here is 8,000, the salinity is 8,000 whatever.
8,000 would be the weather.
Right, that's.
And what we're drinking at the tap, probably raining.
So, it's about 10 times more salty than we want, you'd have to disintegrate it. What's the ocean?
Five times less.
That water's, yeah, very good. Thanks so much.
Yes. And, yes, but this stormwater quality can be improved if we could help us, we direct the stormwater from the middle to the wetland. Like I showed you in my previous slides, if we collect the stormwater directly from the runoff, like the gutters, it could be a lot less salty than 7,000. 7,000 really after the blend with some seawater.
Where and how do you capture the stormwater?
There is a collection system, storm drains.
But I mean, how are we gonna re-divert it, or what are you wanting?
Yeah, there would be, however, the detention funds, suspension infrastructure, as the subdivision develops. Yeah, the plan would be to set that out, well, perhaps, prevent it, discharge it, they discharge it.
The retention bond?
Right.
Okay.
You know, they do this all the time in hilly areas, Colorado, the people just started stealing water. They just started flattening their land out, digging holes, and then selling it back to the water district. You know, it's just a little easier when it's flowing downhill, not in a big pool dip.
And you only took one reading, right, on one particular day?
Yes, just one day.
Have we ever tested it over a prolonged period of time?
Well, we did it several times.
Today, so we'll see how it is. Like, had it just rained, had it been a month since it rained, I mean, there's a lot, a lot of variable factors in there. Maybe when it just rains, it's only 3,000, and that's a great time to pump it in.
We had to rain today, but it was minimal.
Just my car dirty. Me too.
We had some good rain about three, four weeks ago.
Yeah, I'd love to test it like, hey, it just rained, what it, you know, what it is exactly. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no problem. Thank you very much for the question. Yeah, we have a plan to collect six samples every month. And see how the waterfall changes. And I got the second batch today. So I know the Colorado engineers did the Title 14. Project and this is, I'm just doing their plan. Schematics, but if you add another. So here's a wetland, I'm trying to, I'm trying to add to this and we could possibly. Add more water. To your water supply. And I'd like to propose a project, joint project with Laguna, Magic Water District. And it's another kind of feasibility, I'm not trying to sell you anything. I just wanted to see if this type of approach is doable. And I know the water project is all site specific, even if one idea works. In some markets, you know, apply for Isabel, use it, whatever. So it seems like this is a good setting that to. Understand the feasibility of stormwater augmentation of weak point water with stormwater. I'd like to propose a physical study and there are several possible funding sources. I'm not asking the district to offer the money, obviously, you guys are willing to. So I think the first thing we should do is estimate the actual stormwater volume. Both the flow, how, how much water we can get annually? And how can we store the water and how can convey the water to the treatment plant to be. To, for, for the water to be treated. Also regulatory issues and water rights. Again, this is a pretty complex issue. You know, we don't, we don't want to wait and sit and wait for the time to come. What can, what can we, why can't we do some homework, start talking to T C two? And see if this is kind of idea we could exercise when the real drought hits again. And the district needs more water. So I'm not asking you to do this right away, but why don't we start. Thinking about this type of approach to enhance and diversify your kind of work. Everybody's doing business here, so I think it's important to mitigate risk by diversifying. I understand that part. So I think this is great collaboration opportunity. I'd just like to pitch. Next slide. So these are the possible sources of funding. Bureau of Reclamation has already funded your Title 14 projects. They have a different programs to fund this type of feasibility studies. Also, today I'm specifically asking the Board of Directors to. To help me actually apply for one of the award program administered by Water Research Foundation. Call El Bush Award, since Charles is interested in this approach and. It could be a possibility to, for me to have a letter of endorsement, which is required to apply for the award. This award is really to the researchers who are developing a new novel innovative idea. To secure the water resources for the United States of America. So that's one, one, one way. And there are another programs that we could possibly pursue together. A little bit about us, we are Texas State University located in San Marcos, Texas. This is the ball gap. I learned that grounds will have a ball gap. A little bit different logo. It's about five hours from. The water district. It's not too far away. If I want, I can fly, but I'd rather drive. It's not that bad at all. My lab, I just started my career at Texas State. Just like I said, I was in California. I was an engineer back in California, 10 years doing some water resources projects. Right now I have how many now? Eight students, two PhD student, three master's student and three undergrad. Different programs, civil engineering, biological sciences and environmental engineer. And so far I've got half million dollar funding secured from different agencies. In three years and I have a lot of equipment to do some water analysis and water treatment project. So I'm not, I don't need, I'm not needing money to buy equipment to do some research. I just need money to support my students. That's why one of my missions, I have to. Help student success in the water and in environmental change. Thanks, please. Actually, that's it. So yeah, I'm just here to share my idea with you. All and hopefully you guys like the idea and see if there are, maybe there's anything we could do together.
Can you go back one slide? Before we go any further, I need to understand. So you were at this place having what looks like really good tacos in Mexico. And yet one guy has French toast. We need whoever that guy is, we need to have a sit down with him. Especially if he's going to be in the valley, he's going to have to get your seat.
He's not going to find a French.
I personally would say, since I already said I was for it ahead of time, I'm all for it. Please write him a letter of recommendation. I don't know if we need a motion for that, but. I think there's, there's no.
Good opportunity.
Drawback and whatever we can do to support this. Starting a research thing, yeah, come on down, let's do it. I think it would be, be great. Maybe there's some. Way that we can be a first in the nation on this type of stuff. And I really don't see a downside to it. I think it's a good publicity, you know, if you want to put something like that out, if you actually. Shake hands and do something collaboratively, but not without.
The whole board. I think it's a great opportunity for us to work with, with the university and educate the life of the students.
Are you working with other water districts too?
On this idea? And not quite yet, but there are some other cities and water district who express some interest.
Yeah, and I, I think what you were saying about, you know, this being a unique place, I think you might find it dotted all the way up, but. Some unique, you know, variable that happens around Dallas that doesn't happen here. And it may be something that leads to.
Every day I drive to work and I drive by that huge, what is it, L or whatever?
Two large.
And I think, why are we not using that water, you know? I never had thought before that it belongs to probably the federal government. That is probably the trickiest part to negotiate, but you're the perfect man to do it. And I think that certainly given the drought conditions in the country, there's a big appetite for stuff like this. I'm all for it. So we wish you success. We're here to back you up, probably needed. I'd love to see us pumping that in and doing a study on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I concur.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy yourself down here.
Thank you.
I, I believe that there is a motion for.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, I motion approved.
Second. Let me read it first, yes. Item A, consider and discuss for possible approval of the district engineer to provide a letter of endorsement for the Water Research. Foundation endorsement for innovation and applied water quality research motion made by Dr. Lallan. Seconded by Mr. Water, all those in favor? They are, then opposed, none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to, look forward and thank you. Welcome, thank you. Texas item nine, consider and discuss for possible approval of. OVO price escalation and final payment to RP Contractors Inc. for Water Treatment Plant Number One Rehab Clarification. And fluctuation basins.
Yes, this is the water plant one construction work that's already finished out. We did get the final invoice released and retainage. And they did put this OVO price escalation for an amount of $19,934. As part of the request, which was just, you know, just one of these costs related to, to our inflation and materials escalations. We did have a deduct where we didn't have to grow out the basin for $8,600. But right now to pay off this final invoice, we'd basically be exceeding the authorized contract amount by $11,334. So this is a request just for us to, to cover that variance due to the price escalation of their, their equipment. I mean, I guess it's, it's a way, it's, maybe I don't have a good answer for that, but it's more of a. Of their bid was based on a supplier's cost and then they got a notification letter after. The bids were locked in place about the price escalation. So between the time they submitted bids competitively to the time they actually purchased the equipment, that, that was a increase that they incurred.
Yeah, so like the water district should pay because they gave back, well, I mean, that's not, you know, what's happening here. Seems, I'm going to see the date.
It's their response.
Who, why are they, why are they not here telling us, hey, sorry, we do bad, bad work. Do we do a ton of work with them? Should we do it? Shouldn't pay this? Should we negotiate what needs worth? We're trying to save money too. I don't even know, want to know Vivo price escalation. I've never heard that term. Counsel, is that a special technical term?
Vivo is a company that sells equipment for the clarifiers. And that, that's a big company and one, I guess, one source. That has all that equipment for the clarifiers. That's all I know about OVO.
Where, where is the main company?
OVO is Canadian.
RP Constructors.
RP Constructors is from the ground fills OVO.
OVO is Canadian, but it's, we're really doing business with RP Constructors, right?
Yeah, they're our general contractor.
They're the guys who are asking for this money?
Yes.
Well, there's the contractor and then OVO is the company.
And they have something in their agreement that says if we have a price escalation, when we buy stuff, we get automatically pass out on you. And I'm not using too much of our shut up here, but this one.
It's a sticky ball.
Yeah, you pay, take our 20 grand, give it to you. Why don't we split it? That's what I tell, hey, you guys, sorry. Did anybody get, I guess my question would be, did anybody push back on this? If not, I would encourage us to push back before. Pay it.
Before we, yeah, before we just pay it.
Yeah, there was a lot of pushback between the engineer and the contractor and the subcontractor. And so they just sort of kicked the can down the road here to where it got stuck in this, this final payout after they've been. Kicking it back and forth without making a formal change order request earlier in the, in the contract. So it's, it's, it's been floating around, you know, at least six months.
Lost in our throat.
Right. So, so it, I mean, it's, you know, we're only authorized to pay the contract amount. Right now their request exceeds it by 11,000.
Does somebody have a calculator over there? I know that. Finance.
I know that.
267, 530 minus the escalation amount.
167, 530?
Yeah, you see it on here.
Oh, yeah, the, the line item that OVO price escalation, 19,934, that's the escalation amount for. That, that throws a wrench in, in just passing the request through.
Where it says, what's the difference between the 19,934 and the 11,334?
That's the amount above the authorized contract.
What is?
11,334.
So the 19,000, so. So what's already seven?
Well, there's a deduct for the ground because, because this 8,600 is part of the existing contract. And so that's a, so it's a credit.
You did 19,934 minus the 8,600?
Yes, that's the difference.
Great. So did you do 167, 530.9 minus 19,934?
Well, that's gonna, that's gonna be our authorized contract amount, the $8,600.
So we, so we would actually be okay?
Right.
Yeah. So I, I would authorize, did you do it? I mean, I'm going to beat you to it if you don't tell me.
7, 530, 90 minus 19,000.
147, 596.
Yeah, what's it?
147, 596?
Yeah, I will, I approve 147, 596. And outside of that, you can call and say, hey, the board approved this. They didn't approve the rest. We suggest you go back, talk about it. What's the worst they're going to do? Come here and ask for 19,000 bucks and explain it themselves, which they should be doing? Sure, great.
I think that's the right thing to do.
I mean, I, it just seems like everybody.
We're only obligated for a certain contract amount.
Yeah. Bill, Donnie, you, I see you up there, you're probably listening. Do you have any issue with that?
No, what, what's the contract say? I mean, does it have, have a stipulation where they can just. A, ask for more?
No, when they, when they do work without a change order, they're proceeding at risk. So this is.
If someone's signed a change order?
Well, there was no change order request. It just came in a final invoice for this price escalation without any, without being included in a prior change order.
Yeah, it would be like if I had entered a debit bill and then in between me ordering and then the night you got an invoice that states we're hiring. So you just gave me a $10 extra charge.
Well, obviously I'm not for that.
Like that, this is not how it works.
Yeah.
Authorized 147, whatever.
596.
596.
They're going to, by Dr. Lallan.
My second.
Seconded by Mr. Water, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, none, motion carries. Thank you.
And if we talk about it again, great, Charles, you know, what's it, need this guy on the phone to tell. I don't know, I've been taking, put Joel on, Joel on the phone. That's what we need to have, call and tell about.
Okay, let's carry on to item 10, consider and discuss possible approval of payment ratification. For repairs of raw water pump number one at water plant number one.
So before we send out a pump for repair that we needed for water plant number one, now that it's producing water. So we're asking the board to write by the payment of the repair for 10,278 with 97.
Push for approval by Mr. Water. Seconded by Dr. Lallan or all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, none, motion carries. Thank you. Item 11, consider and review expenditures from June 1st, 2022 to June 14th, 2022. Just needs acknowledgement, knowledge by Mr. Water, knowledge by Dr. Lallan, acknowledged by Mr. Friedman.
Acknowledged.
Knowledge by Mr. Donahue. That takes us to item 12, executive session permitted by Open Meetings Act, V T C A Government Code Section 551001. At sequence under section 551074, personal matters, deliberation regarding the evaluation of district employee to a general manager. Are we going to table this? Motion to table.
Okay. Motion to table.
Motion to table by Dr. Lallan, seconded by Mr. Water, all those in favor? They are, none are opposed, motion carries. Takes us to item 13, consider an action on executive session item, if necessary, none, adjourn this meeting at 6:19 PM.